This meeting of the Board of Education is called to order. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd welcome everybody to our meeting this evening, and we'll start by approving our agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda as presented?
None for me, thank you.
Can we have a motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that the Board of Education approve the agenda as printed.
Thank you, Kurt. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion passes, and we'll move forward with our agenda. And we'll open our budget hearing this evening for the proposed budget for 2021-22.
Good evening, Board of Ed and Superintendent Beiling, and welcome to our 2021-22 budget hearing. I've gone over a lot of this stuff with you two weeks ago at our June 14th meeting, but I'm going to touch on just a couple of new things and repeat what we went over on the 14th. So we have several budgets that comprise our budget hearing, one being our Building Site and Sinking Fund budget. This budget will continue currently through December of 2024. It was renewed by the voters. Currently, the Building Site and Sinking Fund is under a headly rollback calculation. We are not able to levy the full .5 mils that we requested to the voters. This is a separate calculation that happens outside of our operating fund headly rollback. The good news for the 2021-22 school year is we did not rollback any further, so we can still levy the .4988 mils for the sinking fund. The Building Site and Sinking Fund is used district-wide for several projects, and those are listed in your board packet for your review. And I would imagine that the Building Site and Sinking Fund will see a little bit more activity now that the current bond projects are starting to come to a close. We could focus in on the Building Site and Sinking Fund to do more improvements throughout the district before potentially coming back to the elementary bond proposal. Also included in your packet is our debt fund budget that we are also required to levy property tax for. And this levy actually pays our required bond payments that the district is obligated to based on bonds that we have issued for the 2021-22 school year. It'll start out in July, levying at 5.37 mils. This is a decrease from the 6.85 mils currently. This would only be reflected in the city of Portage, and I went over this two weeks ago. Based on the outcome of the August election, that winter bill would levy the additional millage to bring it to 6.85, meaning that the levy remains unchanged from our current school year that we're about to finish out going into next school year. Also included is our lunch fund. Breakfast and lunch first offerings will be free next year to all of our students under the USDA. The lunch fund does contribute back to the general fund on an annual basis in direct costs. Currently, that's budgeted at $170,000. That will be calculated based on the final overall expenditures for the year. But we are very lucky that we have a self-supported lunch fund, and that the general fund does not have to contribute back to that lunch fund. We just started our Meetup Eat Up program, I believe, on June 15th, so that also is providing meals out to our community. I also included for you the School Service Fund and Bookstore budgets. We are required, under GASB 84, to give you these service funds for your approval. We have the bookstore at Central High and Portage Northern, and the School Service Fund is formerly known as our internal agency funds. Just wanted to include this for your reviews so that you're aware of the different revenue streams that actually comprise the State School Aid Fund. The State School Aid Fund is where we receive our largest amount of revenue because we're funded on a per pupil basis. So items such as sales tax, state education tax, and income tax are the largest drivers of the State School Aid Fund. And as I've reported back to the board, the revenue estimates that were set by the state have been surpassed to large levels, and we are anticipating that they will push this down into our per pupil foundation allowance for us. But we still don't have anything final yet. I'm having clicker problems. Okay. So the process, the governor comes out with her recommendation in February for a budget. House and Senate there then follow. So I reported back to the board that back in February, the governor came out with her recommendation of $164 per pupil increase. And she also built into her first budget a declining enrollment piece because districts have been experiencing, a lot of districts across the state have been experiencing declining enrollment, and this would help offset that revenue that's lost. The House then followed with a $100 per pupil increase, and then the Senate followed with a $250 increase per pupil. Then, fast forward to the May Revenue Estimating Conference, where we found out that statewide, the general fund and the State School Aid Fund has surpassed their revenue targets for the year by billions of dollars, each one by a billion dollars. So the governor put out a recommendation at that time to the House and Senate that she would propose that they increase per pupil foundation to $8,692. So they started working through everything in conference committee, and just this past Thursday, on June 24th, the House passed a bill to increase the per pupil foundation allowance to $8,700 per pupil. That would be probably one of the largest increases that school districts have seen since probably the 80s. So this is substantial. The Senate has not approved this yet. They're scheduled to be back in session on Wednesday, June 30th. So we're hoping that we might have a better picture to know what our foundation allowance is on Wednesday or end of day on Wednesday, but that's just where we are at. So we're in a hurry-up-and-wait mode, but we are required by law to pass our budget for next year by July 1st. So I'm coming to you tonight with information about assumptions that I built into my budget that we started back in April. So we built a budget at a foundation allowance increase of $200 per pupil. This would mean $8,311. This is substantially less than what the governor proposed, substantially less than what the House has proposed, which means that if all of those bills actually come through and are passed and signed by the governor, my revenue, I could be off a lot on this, you know, about $3 million potentially off. But we can amend that at amendment time once we actually know what our fall enrollment is. So I've built a preliminary budget for you with a $200 increase, enrollment at a level of 8,741 pupils based on a 90-10 blend. Now, keep in mind, we had the super blend this year to help us, which was 75% of two years' previous enrollments and then 25% of the current year. That is going away under current legislation. We are uncertain if there is going to be any pupil accounting requirement changes, such as days and hour requirements. At this time, I've built it on what we're accustomed to, 1,098 hours, 180 days. This is all subject to change as well. I put into this the slight increase in the retirement. The MIPS rate from 28.21 to 28.23. Also took into account insurance rates. We know what July through December is going to look like, but we don't know what Mesa or Carrier will renew our rates at come January of 2022. So I just assumed an increase of 3% on that. And then some of our areas were fortunate enough that we have the hard cap to fall back on to use for budgeting purposes. The majority of our employment groups are up for negotiation. I think you're going to hear more about those groups with Brad later. Currently, only the bus drivers have a settled contract, but I believe that that is going to be subject to change here really soon because negotiations have been going on with Secretaries, the custodial group, and also the PEA. So at this time, when I built this budget, because there were so many things that were unknown, I only planned for steps at this time in the budget, steps and steps only, no increase on any base salaries. Included in this budget are only our normal federal grants that we have, which are Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV, and a small piece of SR2 funding that we're using for our virtual program for next year. I would like to build into the amendment time the other federal sources that we have because we will have closed out current year by then to know that we're not overspending anything, just to be precautionary. And also, just to note to the board, the enrollment factor of 8,741 pupils is basically reflecting, at this time, and we hope it changes, a decrease in enrollment at the kindergarten level. As a district, Portage Public Schools is subject to a headly rollback where we are not able to levy our full 18 mils for operating. We've had several years where our property tax values have increased beyond the rate of normal inflation, causing us to have to rollback our rate. So the good news is we didn't rollback any further for the 2021-22 school year, but we are only able to levy 17.5695 mils, and you will see that tonight for the few people that have to sign the L4029 form for me, that we are not levying the full 18 mils for operating. And that actually causes us to not receive approximately $356,000 in property tax revenue on an annual basis. Now, this could be subject to change based on whatever happens with property tax values because property tax values change monthly for us. But just taking a snapshot when I was dealing with May numbers, we're looking at $356,000. Also included in this budget is our KRESA enhancement millage. That's approximately $3.2 million for us, and the special ed millage that flows through KRESA that was just recently renewed this May. Those are very large flows of revenue that do extremely benefit the district and our students. So I touched on this briefly on June 14th at our meeting, where I told you where I projected us to end the 2021 school year with our Second Amendment, where revenues are going to exceed expenditures by approximately $637,000. That's if every revenue dollar is received and every expenditure is spent in full. So I assume that there will be some fluctuation there until we close the books at the end of June. And it takes us about a month and a half or two months to close everything out for the auditors. I would hope that, you know, we might be able to come back and report to you a slightly more positive number. But until everything is in there and final, I can't predict quite everything. It can come to an extent, but not everything. So at the end of 2021, we're projecting fund balance to be approximately 10.32%. Now, keep in mind, this is just a projection, not a final number, until we actually have everything done for the auditors. The preliminary budget that I'm bringing to you tonight for 2022 is showing expenditures exceeding revenues by $718,000. This is using, what I hope is an incorrect per pupil foundation allowance of $8,311 and using a blended enrollment of 8,741 students. Hopefully, both of those numbers, I'm too low. But it's a conservative approach. It's all that I had to work with at the time to build the budget. There are some districts that are only budgeting on a $100, $150 increase. So based on the preliminary budget that I'm bringing to you tonight, it would possibly reduce our fund balance to 9.89% of expenditures. And this is just a chart to show you the history of where our fund balance has ended at each year, showing the slight increase at the end of last year, and then a potential decrease going into next year. But all this is subject to change based on whatever funding ends up being. That's all that I have to bring to you tonight in regards to the budget hearing. Are there any questions?
Thank you for your work. I mean, obviously, we don't know. I mean, and a year ago, you were predicting a huge loss for this year. I mean, and we amended once, and we amended again. So I'm assuming we'll be doing something similar in 2022. Because you don't know. I mean, we don't know our enrollment, and we don't know our foundation allowance, and those are the two big factors of the revenue side.
Right. I mean, we're in a similar situation to what we were last year, except at the opposite end of the extreme. It's, you know, we're looking to get more revenues this year. We'll presenting through our monthly financial reports, updates on where we are, you know, as early as our meeting in July. And then any changes to how that will change, any actions that we take administratively, we'll certainly keep you appraised of that before the First Amendment.
I think one of the harder items to project would be healthcare costs. You had 3% as a nice filler in this one. I know of another organization today, just learned they're looking at a 7% increase.
Well, some of our groups, we do follow a hard cap. So we can predict, we know what those cap allowances are going into building this budget for part of the group. Anything else?
Well, I think we all feel real comfortable with the work that you did. I mean, you presented it to us two weeks ago, and it's basically unchanged. So I want to thank you for your work. I also want to thank you for the general fund narrative.
Yes.
I mean, that was very complete and answers any questions I think that anyone has. And I just want to thank administration for the information on class size and the work that's been done there. Appreciate that.
I would like to also thank the administrative team for their work that they put into that narrative because it was not just me. It was the whole team.
Thank you, Paula.
Yeah, I would just say, Paula, nice job tonight. Nice job two weeks ago. Questions are covered.
Thank you.
Anything else for Paula? Any comments from the audience on the 2021-22 budget? Hearing none. The budget hearing is closed, and we'll move to the superintendent's report. Please, Mark.
Thank you, Randy. We have several items to update you on this evening. The first two items, the bond project update and the bond budget update, along with the change order summary. Ron Heron and Dan Rathburn are here to update you on those two. Welcome back to the table, Ron.
Woo-hoo.
Hopefully, this is on. Can you hear me? Yeah, happy to be back tonight. And I'll just say, I want to make thanks to all of our team for stepping in and my stead and doing whatever needed to be done. So I'm very appreciative of the folks that I work with and the work that they do, and just very appreciative of that, so.
I'm going to give you a short, really, construction update, and then Dan will be taking you through the change orders and the financial summary to date. So, and then I'll add a few comments. I'll start with Central and West Middle School. Both those buildings are doing some commissioning work there. We haven't been able to complete that commissioning work. We've got a couple of issues with some train items that we need to get resolved before we can complete that commissioning. But that should be completed within the next two weeks, so that's what we anticipate. We also are, the rain has allowed us to look at a lot of our drainage areas with this volume of rain that we've been getting. And we are continuing to look at any drainage issues that might be out there to make sure that they are, really assuring that they're working as designed. So it's given us a chance to do that, and we're continuing to do that work. The base coat on the parking lot at Central High School there for the student overflow, that's going to be weather permitting, done on July 6th. And so they're continuing to get prepared for that, and then they'll do their final coat on the 28th of July. And that's it for Central, Middle, and West. Moving over to the Northern Auditorium. We are continuing with site work there, finishing topsoil this week and fixing some of the areas out front. Next week, we'll do the final landscaping as well. The week of July 12th, we'll do a final top coat and striping on the parking lot there at the auditorium. In the interior, the pool tile will be done this week, and we'll start filling the pool. And that's always a big step for us, to make sure it holds water appropriately. We're doing some commissioning, final commissioning on our elevator inspection and installing some of our low-voltage card readers this week as well. And then I'd like to, that's it for the auditorium. And I don't know if you guys discussed the window film activities in your workshop, but I'll just mention that that work is scheduled to start on the 11th to install in both Central Middle and North Middle Schools. And the vendor we selected will be going back and forth, really doing the applications that need to be done. That work was work that we, areas of the building that we identified with our public safety officers to identify those areas critical for the safety of our staff and students in that building as it pertains to our ALIS training, so. So that work will be happening starting mid-July. And that's all I have for you as it relates to construction update. Now I'm going to turn it over to Dan and let him fill you in on the change orders and our financial statement.
Okay, thank you, Ron. So we'll start with the financial statement, and we have two changes and variants. We have one listed on the Central Middle School in sight, that is the parking lot, and that's $433,189. And then we have an increase to the technology budget of $271,959. So we have a total variance of $705,148, all tied under Change Order 37. Moving over to the change order report, we have three changes. They are all under the Northern Auditorium project. The first is to change the combo starter disconnects to regular disconnect switches with the appropriate ratings for a deduct of $1,500. This actually makes them the same as what we have at Central and Auditorium, and it's, these are disconnects that don't need to be monitored, so. Next item is to add a shunt trip breakers on the E stops. This was something that the boiler inspector wanted us to add, and that's an add of $605. And the final is added duct work for BCU 1 and EF 5 in the pool mechanical room to compensate around multiple overhead MFPs. So really, what this is, is exhaust fans. We're having the duct go out of the top and lieu at the bottom on those units, and this is a field coordination issue. And that's $1,594. Total changes there for Change Order 37, $699 total.
I'd just like to add, on your financial summary, that leaves a total variance amount of $1.95,779 remaining in there. So the two items that Dan listed there were obviously items that the board pre-approved for us to go ahead with. We will continue to, and I don't know if you remember, in March, we brought a list of future enhancements, 16 items. We're starting to peck at that a bit, and so next month, I hope to bring at least a couple of more that are popping up that were high priority items, some with the auditorium. And probably another one would be the, boy, it's jumping out of my head. Anyway, I'll bring those to you next month, a couple of items that are on that future enhancements list. Any questions?
Hey, Ron, is there any time that you could walk us through the northern pool before, in July sometime?
We can set that up, for sure.
Yeah. I haven't seen it at all, so, you know, if they're filling it, it'd be fun to walk through.
Okay.
If you're up to it. I don't know if you're up to it or not.
Well, we'll get with our construction crew and make sure everything's ready for folks to walk through. We'll set that up with Ron.
Thank you, Ron, Dan. The financial report is provided there for you. We're not going to go over that with you. It's the last report. It's kind of a moot issue, given that you're amending the budget, and so you have that for your information, if you care to look at it. The next item, Dr. Pascoe is here to give you an update on our annual MATS law report. Michael? And then I have two additional items after that that will be part of the report.
Great. Good evening, Superintendent Beiling, trustees. Tonight, I'll present on, I'll give a brief overview of MATS bullying, or MATS law, the bullying data from this school year, as we typically do at this time of year. Obviously, it goes without saying that when we're looking at comparison of 1920 to 2021, significantly different years, you know, a lot of 2020 spring slash a little bit of winter, we were fully virtual due to COVID. So the numbers are going to look a little different than a '20 to '21 school year where we had face-to-face, fully virtual, as well as some high flex going on at the secondary level. So not necessarily apples-to-apples, but nonetheless, let's take a look at the data, something that we'll have to keep mindful of as we move forward into '21, '22, and beyond. So this is our typical report that we usually present to you. You have your packets in front of you. This could be page two or three that I usually just go over in terms of reviewing the numbers. So we look at the overall demographics. You know, you look at 100 referrals/incedences in 1920 versus 63 in 2021, so a reduction of 37 referral/incedences that we had, K through 12. We also break it down to females and males. We know typically our males seem to be a little bit higher on the offender list in terms of the bullying data. But as we break it down demographically, at least by gender, that 63 was broken down from 51 for males and 12 females. When we look at elementary, middle, and high, we saw a reduction of 19 at elementary, 3 at middle school, and then 15 at high school. You can see... at middle school, and then 15 at high school, you can see in that top right there. We also break it down by demographics in terms of grade levels, so just some noticeable things in terms of some small reductions at fourth, fifth, eighth, ninth, and 10th grade. And then we also had a few grade levels where we saw an uptick from 1920 to 2021. That was third, sixth, and seventh. So we just want to pay attention to those grade levels, see what's happening in those particular grade levels, see if there's anything that we need to address as we move forward. But it is data that we want to be mindful of. And naturally, obviously, in terms of the disposition, the less number of incidences and referrals that we have, the less verbal warnings, the less detentions, the in-school suspensions, out-of-school suspensions we'll have, and you see that kind of in that bottom right. And one of the numbers I know you guys have been curious about over the years is just, you know, the number of offenders in terms of how that relates to the number of offenses. And so out of that 63, we actually had 52 students commit those offenses. So you can see in that number, there's a few repeaters. As to how many, we don't break it down to that level, but just know that it's not 63 individual students, but there's a few students in there that have repeated some bullying incidences and situations throughout last school year. One of the things that when I ask principals towards the end of the year, as well as we go through the year, and we look at this specific data, I always ask, you know, what's made the impact? What have you changed? Have you tried anything new? One of the common themes, a couple of common themes in terms of comments that I received back this year was just due to COVID protocols. Regardless of the modalities, I think our COVID protocols with the cohorting and social distancing played a factor in terms of the reduction in the numbers of the last two school years. That goes without saying, we had less kids in our buildings face-to-face, you know, that was helpful in the reduction. But another common theme is this term called restorative practices, which I'm sure we've presented to you in the past. But I think, you know, with less kids in the building, our assistant principals, our engagement specialists, they've spent a lot more time just working with families, working with students in terms of resolving conflict, getting to the bottom of situations, improving the communication between two parties that are having a difficult time, really spending some time on getting students to take ownership of their actions. I think, I think you'll see that pay, go a long way as we move throughout the upcoming school years, is the work of our school leaders, our engagement specialists, our teacher leaders around restorative practices. And I know we've done quite a bit of training with that over the years, but that's something that our leaders, our administrators, our teacher leaders are saying that's making a difference. Because when we take time not to just be punitive and issue consequences, but look at these situations as opportunities for communication and to really have students take ownership and some accountability of just taking care of one another and treating one another with respect, and that care is extremely important. Our middle school counselors do a lot with social-emotional lessons in our classrooms. They follow a program called Second Step, and I'm not sure if folks have heard of that. It's kind of a prescribed curriculum that really just gets into the classroom at the teacher level with our middle school counselors, and they talk about, you know, a lot of social-emotional items and discussion points to really get kids thinking about their behavior and how they treat one another. So from what I'm hearing from the buildings, that's been really effective in terms of being proactive. And a lot of the, you didn't see a lot at the high school level, as you can see in the numbers, but the majority of what they dealt with this past year has been something that's happened outside of school on social media, and then our families come back, or our students come back and ask for a little bit of help in terms of resolving. And as you guys know, we'll do all we can in order to help families out, as well as our students, to resolve a situation, even if it doesn't initiate or stem from, you know, the school setting. And that's just the approach that we take. So most of the high school ones you saw related to social media. And really, the big conversation right now with our leaders moving back into 21, 22 is just a reset on our culture and climate of all of our school communities. You know, we're going to be about relationships, re-engaging students, trying to identify students early if they're struggling social-emotionally, making sure that they get support early, and just really paying attention to, you know, that reset of who we are, not only as our small 14 school communities, but who we are as Portage Public Schools in terms of our relationships, how we treat one another, how we welcome one another. And so that's going to be a big focus outside of just that, addressing some of the loss that may have happened over the last 15, 16 months, is really just creating that welcoming environment and that positive school culture and climate. That's going to be a big theme as we come back into August and September. So that's kind of just the gist. In the following pages, you always see kind of our usual strategies and kind of anti-bullying strategies that we have. Some may or may not have taken place based off of what was in front of us in terms of student body, obviously secondary, we didn't have students in the building. So some of those anti-bullying strategies may not have happened, but those are your typical ones that you see year in and year out. Again, we add new ones as they come. We remove any ones that are deemed ineffective, but always adding new things to the list. But that restorative practice piece is probably one of the most impactful ones that is in action in all of our buildings, K through 12. So I'm not sure if anyone has any questions on the data for this year or related to last year, but be happy to try to answer anything you guys have.
I just noticed something, and you alluded to it. The out-of-school suspension for 2021 compared to 2019 and 2020 was higher for that, and would you say that that's because we spent a significant amount of time virtually to help make social media more available?
Yeah, that's possible. One of the things that some of the high school folks told me is they held a lot of their, I don't know, discipline, but conversations via Google Meet as well. So it was a little different in terms of how we even held the conversations when something took place. So maybe with a little bit more time in terms of, you know, being in that virtual environment at home, maybe it was allowed folks to engage a little more in that. Again, the incidences were lower, but in terms of how we approached it, you know, in-school or an out-of-school suspension, maybe that in-school suspension wasn't available. Maybe they were, you know, deemed as a virtual learner, even though they were out of school already. I didn't dig too deep into that, but so that's a good point to just note that we had more out-of-school suspensions versus the previous year, even though we had fewer incidences.
Any other questions for Michael? Thank you, Michael.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next update is from Dan from Mastik, give you a little update on our technology efforts. Dan?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the time tonight. You're all aware of the wireless project we're going to be undertaking this summer to shore up some issues we've had there, but I think that it's no surprise to the board that all things COVID put a lot of pressure on the technology department, and with every department in this district. Some changes we've already made, we did add a second internet connection. Our one provider that we've used since my time here has done a great job for us, but even they've had some issues to deal with, with some added load and other physical issues. And so bringing in a second connection has really stabilized our access to the outside world, which is helpful. We've begun the process of replacing the connections between the data closets in our larger buildings with fiber optics in lieu of the copper that we have now, just to get some more bandwidth and flexibility. We are waiting any day the replacement panels for the digital signage for Central High and Northern High to bring those up to fully working condition and in full color. So that'll be nice when that project's done. One of our big projects every summer, quite frankly, is device maintenance. We have a little over 15,000 end-user computer devices in this district serviced by ATEX, so you can do the math. The lion's share of those devices are Chromebooks, many of which we deployed into the field to support virtual learning during the pandemic. We're getting a lot of those devices back this summer. We can triage them, repair them where we can, and get them back into the field. You know, as I mentioned to the board, though, one of the challenges we have with Chromebooks is finding parts. The manufacturers really kind of treat these things as disposable these days. We have one outstanding Chromebook order to come in. The board did approve a Chromebook purchase back in November. Those Chromebooks are still on back order due to supply chain issues related to, again, all things COVID. The other major project I kind of wanted to fill you in on tonight, we are going to bring in an outside firm to do a technology audit for the district. Won't be much unlike what we do for our financial audit every year. They won't be able to go through every system, just because we've got so much, but we're taking a random sample and going through some of the more key systems, just to bring in another outset of eyes to look at where we are and what we should be doing to move forward. I honestly don't think they're going to find a whole lot, if only as we had four engineers in already to work on the wireless systems with us. So we think we know most of the variables, but another set of eyes is always a good thing. I do think we owe it to the community and to the staff to provide that assurance as well, moving forward, considering some of the struggles that we've had. And from a positive standpoint, I expect this process to give us a really good platform to plan for the next five, 10 years of infrastructure purchases for the district. We've got some other minor things going on, but those are the highlights for what we'll be doing this summer. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, Dan. And the last update we have, hopefully it didn't get lost on everyone this year, that we are celebrating our 100th anniversary as a district this coming year, and it gives us an opportunity to do some special, with the look of some of the things we're trying to do. And so Michelle Karpinski's been working on some logos, some concepts, and some ideas that we can use to celebrate the fact that we've been around for 100 years. So, Michelle?
All right, thank you. Good evening, trustees and Superintendent Belang. Yes, we thought it was a really opportune tie to, you know, give ourselves a little facelift, as you were, after 100 years. Not that we've used the previous logo that long, but, oh, there it is, oop, too far. There we go. Obviously, this is our current logo, and it has served us well for a number of years. You know, good marketing often tells you that you don't want to change your logo too often, but as we tried to look at how we could incorporate kind of the celebration of 100 years into this, it really wasn't working very well. So we thought we would just kind of update things a little bit, maybe make it a little cleaner, a little more modern. And so we've been working on a number of concepts that I want to share with you tonight. None of these are finalized, but we are moving in a certain direction, and we wanted to kind of share that with you. So here are all the different things we kind of looked at. We had a graphic designer work on this for us, kind of giving them the parameters. We didn't want to stray too far from our current look, but also, again, wanted to kind of refresh update. So we kind of landed at that one in the middle with the 100 years. That 100 may look familiar to you because we have already used that on some clothing items and stuff as we tiptoed into the 100-year stuff before COVID. And so we kind of liked the idea of sticking with that. Although, as we looked at that more closely, we realized that that gray background might cause a little bit of some challenges with just using it in different documents and in different applications. So, so, oop, so we landed at this. This is kind of the direction we're headed right now. So it's more of a transparent, it could be used on white, really any color. The gold kind of pays homage to the fact that, you know, Central is, was our first building. And we felt like this could be something that we could use for several years, not just for the, you know, 21, 22 school year, but certainly for a number of years before we transitioned away from the 100 years. So we created a couple of different versions of that, kind of the long version. Sorry about that. There we go, sorry. There's kind of a more stacked version that we can use as well, again, depending on the application and what kind of document or website or whatever we're using it on. And then we just knocked up a letterhead version as well, and a T-shirt just for fun. We also wanted to have that option to transition. We don't want to lose the Future Learns Here tagline, but it got really, it got really busy with that 100 in there as well. So we also worked up kind of a version that then, as we transition away from using the 100, could, you know, return with the same font style and everything, but reincorporate the Future Learns Here as well. Whether or not we kept that gold line or decided to go with something else, you know, again, these are kind of all concepts at this point, so those things are still up for discussion, and whether that's something we would want to maintain or change. And then that's just kind of all of them put together. That middle one there is, might be what like the icon would perhaps look like, and right now that's that little gray square that you see sometimes, it just says PPS on it. We have a couple other versions of that as well. So those are just kind of the concepts we're looking at this point. Like I said, they're not final, but that's kind of the direction that we're headed, and we just wanted to share those with you tonight. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to try and answer.
Are we concerned at all about having it blue and yellow for one half of our district?
Well, it should be gray. So maybe the monitor, it is showing up a lot more blue there. We do have the actual colors, but that would be a gray with the yellow. We could, that is very much a central kind of yellow, so we could turn that more into a gold.
It does look blue from my...
Yeah, it's really meant to be a gray. So you're right, it does look blue on the screen, but the actual color, if you go into the graphic design, it would be portage gray, if you will.
I think on your handout, it's a better representation of the color.
Right.
Yeah, because that does look very...
Yeah, it does look very blue on these monitors, for sure. Yeah, looks better on them.
So how long would we envision that 100-year logo would be used?
I mean, I think we could use it for three, four, five years if we wanted to. I mean, you know, you can, not that we'd be actively celebrating the 100 years, but I think we certainly could be acknowledging it for that long if we wanted to. And we could kind of, you know, it could be open for discussion, but I think certainly, you know, a lot of companies, logos, brands would do something like that, and then slowly transition away. So that's why we kind of wanted to have that post-design as well, kind of in the hopper. So kind of when it felt right, we could make that change.
So the Future Learns Here could disappear for two or three years?
I think we could still use it in certain places, but yeah, with that 100 in there, it just got really busy. But I think we could certainly keep it on things like the masthead. Maybe we separate it from the actual logo itself and still use it in other places. So again, that's one of the reasons we wanted to get feedback, to see if that was something, you know, that's okay, or if we really want to, you know, kind of go back and really see if there's a way to incorporate that.
That future was really tied to both bonds, you know, the future of learning elementary, the future of learning middle schools. And, you know, we had some discussion tonight about positioning the district for the next 100 years, the future.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And I just, I don't know, I just wondered about the future disappearing for that long or whatever.
Let's hope not.
Right, right.
Have you thought about maybe, if you're thinking about using this logo for next three to five years maybe, including the date, the actual dates of the 100 years, so that that's really clear?
Oh, sure, yeah. Yeah, again, it's, how to incorporate it without getting it too busy. And again, that may be something we can, again, you can have different versions, so maybe that's something else that we could look at, for sure.
Nice job.
No, that's great feedback, and I will definitely take those suggestions back to our designer and see if we can come up with some solutions that still keep it nice and clean and crisp, and not too busy, but accomplishes those goals, so.
Yeah, I don't want to problem solve here, but I just wonder if public could go away to make room, if public could go away and make room for your 100.
Oh!
I don't know, just a thought. I don't know. You ask, you ask.
Hey, we can try. It's just moving stuff around on the case.
No, thanks for that, all your work.
So that's interesting, because you do have a policy about changing the district name, and the interpretation so far has been Portage Public Schools and the Future Learns Here as the only two elements that wouldn't be changed. And that's, what you're proposing is a policy change, perhaps.
Could be, could be, yeah. That's what we do.
And I have a suggestion that I'll send to you privately.
Okay, that sounds great, yes. If you have any...
Not with this, but just something else.
Okay.
Because usually we do little things, like we have the little magnets, and we have pencils and pens, and so I just, I...
Wonderful, yeah. So the first step, yes, we want to get this kind of pulled together, then we can start, you know, really, as we develop materials for the coming year, we want to be sure to incorporate this in on that. So we have a little bit of time to play with it, but not too much time.
So I at least, I got to ask the question is, could there be an alternative second version color that would involve, say, an orange more than a gold?
Well, I think...
So that when T-shirts are made up and go Huskies, you know, all that sort of thing, that it reflects that school?
Right, I think certainly we could change the color of that 100. So you're keeping the gray, which is the district color, and you could certainly like insert, so if Portage Northern wanted to have T-shirts or leases or whatever made with the 100 logo, they could change that to an orange or a brown or white if, you know, I think we could build that kind of flexibility into it, because, you know, that is the challenge at the district level, because we have so many schools and they all have their own colors. So it's hard to get to that neutral, that neutral color that applies to everybody, because we're so large. But I think there certainly could be room for that as well. And I know when that 100 was developed, there were kind of different versions, but they were all ones that had the square, you know, like the gray background, they had the different colored backgrounds on them, so, yeah, but definitely, that could be a possibility. And what we would do, once we kind of finalize these, we'll definitely come up with like a standards document, so that we could give instruction to each, anybody who might use these on exactly what they can and should and shouldn't do with them, so.
Very good, Michelle, thank you.
Thank you.
And that's it for the reports under my section.
Okay, Mark, thank you. We'll move to comments and communications. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board this evening?
No.
No. Okay, we'll move to the consent agenda on page 10. And tonight, we have five items. The first is to approve the meeting minutes from the June 14, 2021 Committee of the Whole Work Session and Closed Session. The second item is that we approve the purchase of Dell switches from Dell Technologies in an amount not to exceed $502,124.60, the proceeds for which will come from the 2019 Bond Enhancement Fund. Our third item is that we approve the purchase of 2021, 22 school year curriculum materials for K-12 replacement, enrollment increases, and new adoption totaling $102,001.65, the funds for which will come from the 2021, 22 General Fund Budget. The fourth is that the board approve renewing its membership to MASB for the 2021, 22 school year without the dues plus option for a total of $9,287. And finally, that we approve revising the statement under Ends and Policy 1.0 Global Ends to Read. The following end statements all contribute to a successful graduate of Portage Public Schools. Are there any exceptions to the consent agenda as presented? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved, and we'll move to our required action items. The first is the amended budget appropriation resolutions for the 2021 school year on page 50. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education adopt the resolutions for the General Fund, Debt Retirement Fund, Building and Site-Sinking Fund, and the School Service Fund for budgets for 2020, 21 as presented.
Thank you, Teri, is her second?
Second.
Thank you, Keith. Any discussion? All in favor then, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes, and the 2020, 21 budget amendment is approved. Our second action, required action item is on page 66, and that's the Budget Appropriation Resolutions for the 2021, 22 school year. Is there a motion, please, on page 66?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make the motion that the Board of Education adopt the resolution for the General Fund, Debt Retirement Fund, Building and Site-Sinking Fund, and the School Service Fund budgets for 2021 through 22 as presented.
Thank you, Kurt.
Seconded.
Thank you, Bo. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes, and the 2021, 22 budget resolution is approved. Our next action item is a resolution to set the 2021 tax rates, and that is on page 78. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. President, I offer the following motion, that the Board of Education adopt the resolution which sets tax rates for both summer and winter lettuces as presented.
Thank you. Celeste, is her second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Teri. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes, and the 2021 tax rates are set. We now have an action item, which is the retiree proclamation on page 81. Is there a motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make the motion, the Board of Education approve the 2021 retiree proclamation as presented.
Thank you, Keith. Is there a second?
My second?
Thank you, Celeste. I'll take a moment and read the proclamation. Proclamation, recognition, and commendation for retiring employees. Whereas, the following certified and classified employees have announced their intention to retire from Portage Public Schools, namely Ron Heron and Jeff Hamilton. And whereas, these retirees have faithfully served and supported the students and staff of this community. And whereas, these retirees supported great teaching and learning in classrooms throughout our district. And whereas, these retirees took phone calls or answered email at all hours of the day. And whereas, appropriate recognition of this dedicated and devoted service shall come to the attention of the entire community. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Portage Public Schools takes great pleasure in recognizing the contributions of these individuals and expresses its sincere gratitude for their contributions to Portage Public Schools, and further wishes these individuals a healthy, happy, and rewarding retirement. Proclaim this 28th day of June, 2021, Portage Public Schools, Board of Education. Any comments for anyone?
Just thanks to these two individuals for their service to our community.
For sure, and it sure was good to see Ron again tonight. Yeah, yeah. Okay, then, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes, and the retiree proclamation is approved. Our next item is a motion to go into closed session, and that's on page 83, please.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education move into closed session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining strategy as allowed under the Open Meetings Act 15.268, Section 8C.
Thank you, Teri, is there a second?
My second?
Thank you, Celeste. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Who?
Roll call, Randy.
Oh, it is roll.
Oh, I didn't think it had to be for 8C. Okay, well, let's do a roll call.
Okay, let's do a roll call. Rusty?
Yes.
Mr. Rashford, excuse me. Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Like your phone here?
Yes.
Mr. Van Anfield?
Yes.
Mr. Silbaria?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. The motion is approved, and we'll be moving into closed session, and we'll be coming back, hopefully in a few minutes, to take action here. Thank you.
Hey, you guys didn't need to stick around.
Yes, we do. This is official business.
We were here. We felt it would be rude to leave at this point. I was there.
Oh.
Oh, you brought a listen?
Is the bag, is the bag plastic or is it paper?
It is that recycled, like.
I take the bag.
TJ Maxx bags.
Yeah, I take the bag.
You take the bag.
I gotta throw this away when I get home.
Well, isn't there a dumpster out in the back or something?
There's a dumpster right up front, probably. I don't know.
I did. I gave you the other one already.
You know what? Just give it to me and I'll throw it in the dumpster at South Haven. Because I'm going back out there anyway.
So you want to take it?
I'll take it. It's fine.
You driving to South Haven tonight? It's raining there.
Yeah. Might not be raining there.
That's true.
I'll carry this. Are you in the front or the back?
I'm in the front.
I'll carry this out.
Thank you.
I'll be a gentleman. Don't tell anybody.
I won't tell anyone. I don't want to ruin your reputation.
Okay, we're back in open session to take action on two labor agreements. Is there a motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the 2021 through 2024 contractual agreement with the PAEOP and the 2021 through 2023 contractual agreement with the Portage Custodial Maintenance Group, MEA NEA.
Thank you. Bo, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes and the labor agreements are approved. And with that, we've reached the end of our agenda. We are adjourned. Thank you.